And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could please have a few moments of silence.
Recording in progress.
Okay. For the passing of Dave Gardner and Skip Hudson. The roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa here. Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Councilmember Schickling.
Here.
Mayor Potem Levell.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. Okay, we have a presentation. From our fire finance director.
Yeah, man, I noticed they set this, isn't this earlier than normal?
I didn't expect it this early, but I guess.
We have our reasons.
Yeah. This one should be actually shorter one. Tonight, we're gonna just quickly cover some of the big capital improvement projects that are planned for next upcoming fiscal year. Tonight, we're gonna be focusing on the grant-funded capital projects. From a dollar standpoint, these four projects make up about eighty percent of the planned capital outlays in the general fund and the harbor fund. So this is kind of where most of our spend is, and so that's why I pulled these out separately. You're very familiar with these projects, so I'm not gonna spend too much time, but it's probably a good kind of refresher for the public as well. So the four projects that are planned for construction for next fiscal year are the Cabrera Mole Rehabilitation, also called Mole Phase Two, the Club Dinghy Dock Pier Replacement, the Five Corners Pedestrian Improvement, and the Pebly Beach Road Revetment. So real quick on the Cabrera Mole, the total project is budgeted currently at twenty million, and that's gonna replace and reconfigure the existing buildings to improve passenger queuing and transportation circulation at the mole. The project's gonna be divided up into stages within Phase Two. The two stages that are gonna start next fiscal year are what we're calling Stage Two or Stage Zero Preconstruction and Stage One, which is the terminal project itself. I'm gonna focus mostly on Stage Zero, but Stage One is gonna include the actually the issuing of a progressive design build RFP, as well as some additional design assistance and portions of the site demolition. So Stage Zero and Stage One, we expect to happen next fiscal year. And so as a refresher, what is included in Stage Zero? So this is what we're calling the preconstruction phase. Most of this activity is gonna occur in the first half of next fiscal year with an estimated budget of 1.8 million of that total twenty million dollar project. So it's gonna include the installation of grates along the old steamer ramp. That RFP should be coming to council, I would assume, at the next council meeting if we're gonna stay on track for this, but if not in May, it'll be coming in June. And the cost for that portion of the project's about six hundred thousand. Then there'll also be, within Stage Zero, the installation of utility systems and temporary infrastructure. So this is to accommodate the temporary bathroom facilities, as well as the temporary ticket facilities, so that the express and the cross-channel passengers are able to operate while the main site's under construction. So that installation has a budget of approximately half a million. There are certain items that maybe don't necessarily fall under preconstruction, but we wanna get a jump on these, and that's procurement of certain electrical panels have a twelve-plus-month lead time to procure them, and so we wanna start that process so we have all the materials on hand for when we get to that phase of the construction. And then lastly, the procurement of the temporary facilities themselves. So that's gonna be, like I mentioned earlier, the temporary restroom facilities, as well as the temporary ticketing, and the cost for that right now is budgeted at approximately four hundred thousand. So again, just as a kind of quick refresher, the two grates we're talking about are kind of highlighted in yellow, and so that's really kind of almost clean up from the first phase of the mole project. And then on the bottom left hand of this picture is where the temporary facilities right now are planned to be located, and so there'll be temporary restrooms closer to the mole and then a ticketing on the other side. So again, all this work, we would expect to be going on during the next, or the first half of next fiscal year. So the next grant-funded project in the harbor is the Club Dinghy Dock Replacement. So the city received a big award from the Department of Boating and Waterways. Ultimately, the source of the funds are federal funds, but we are receiving the funds through the state. The project had a budget of a half a million with three hundred thousand in grant funds, and the city providing two hundred thousand. We've completed the design and engineering phase of the project. As part of the Green Pier project, we'll be also completing the foundation abutment and piles while JILC's on-site as part of that, so there'll be two new piles put in at the Club Dinghy Dock, and that's with an estimated cost of one hundred and forty-five thousand. So the remainder of that monies will be going then towards procurement and construction of a new ramp and also float complex, and we expect that work to occur in the fall. It was our goal to try to get that done before this season, and we just ran out of time. And part of the reason for that is we are waiting the state, I believe, for final approval.
And the federal money is secure?
To the best of our knowledge.
It's not in the bank?
Until we have it, until we have it in the bank, it's not in the bank, but to the best of our knowledge, we'll be receiving it.
Okay.
So then the next project I wanna talk on, the first two were harbor projects. These next two are general fund projects. So the Five Corners Pedestrian Improvements was budgeted at five point three million, and so that's the, you know, the project everyone can see as they come to City Hall, the traffic improvements and the sidewalk improvements along Five Corners. I wanted to just kind of touch on some key milestone dates. So generally, we're looking to have the project completed by the end of 2025 in order to meet that date, and again, these dates may change. So I really pushed Bob to give me a date so I could give some expectation, but I do wanna caveat it with, I understand delays happen, you know, so, but right now, where we're looking at is end of May, completing the frontage improvements on the north side of Tremont, and so that's along where the houses and the flats are. By the end of June, we look to have the intersection improvements started, and so that'd be construction within the intersection at Five Corners this June. In August, we're looking to have the underground utilities along Tremont and Avalon Canyon completed, and so that's the area that's torn up right now where you can see the piping. In September, by the end of September, the south side of Tremont would be completed, and so that's the side kind of adjacent to the City Hall campus. By the end of October, then we'd be looking at the intersection improvements with the total project completion by December. So again, a lot's gonna be happening in the next six, seven months out at Five Corners, but right now, that's kind of the best dates I was able to get out of Bob, so. Just real quick, and then in the upper right, I was in Laserfish looking at City Records for a different issue, and this popped up, and it's a staff report in the upper right from 2006 where they first discussed a conceptual plan for Five Corners.
Dang. Wow.
So then the fourth grant-funded project anticipated for next fiscal year is the first phase of the Pebly Beach Road Revetment Project. So the first phase is really to kind of make those critical repairs to the sinkholes along Pebly Beach Road. The city received two million in DOT Highway Infrastructure Program funding for Phase One, where we are still anticipating to receive that money, but one of the things holding up starting this project, or as I understand it, the main thing holding up is we still haven't gotten the final signed commitment. We've been told it's any day now, so sometime in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, we'll have everything we need to start that project, in which case, and we'll be coming to council either later in May or most likely in June to go out to RFP for that. Given the condition of the road, we are looking to start that right away once we get the federal green light, even if that means construction during the summer months, and that's really just being driven by the condition of the road, as I understand it.
What question?
Yep.
Just 'cause the picture reminded me. Is there any reason why we can't connect with, like, Fabi or any of the local artists to paint the K rails, just to get some local art going and beautifying our town?
No, there's no reason why we can't. I mean, the problem is, we switched some of those out, so we'd.
Right, but, you know.
Yeah, no.
All right, I'll start asking around, thanks.
Well, we did, didn't we put ten thousand dollars for the arts in our budget for this year?
We at least put five thousand, if not. There is money in the budget currently for public art projects. I don't think we've had anything assigned or spent out of that account.
I think we just have to figure out how we approach and, you know, what's our thought and what places.
But it's a great suggestion.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, let's chat later.
And there was even discussion about a percentage of some of our building permit fees going into public art as well.
Oh, that'd be great.
Even one percent, any little thing.
Exactly, yeah, oh, cool.
So we can look at that, too.
Right on.
Sorry, Matt.
Perfect. So that last slide here is just, I kinda wanted to preview some of the projects that I also wanna talk about at the next meeting. So I tried to split it up into two meetings between grant-funded and non-grant-funded, and really focusing on projects where we really expect there to be construction during the next fiscal year. And so some of those projects we wanna talk about at the next meeting are the Green or Pleasure Pier electrical upgrades and potentially some additional structural repairs, the Crescent Avenue Pebly Beach Road elbow improvements, citywide paving project, as well as the Pebly Beach Landfill Life Extension Project. And lastly, if there are specific projects that you would like us to bring back for further discussion or ask for a status update, we're happy to bring those at the next meeting as well, so let Dave, myself, or Bob know, and we can incorporate an update into the next, the next council meeting.
Matt, just a question on some of the purchases that are gonna be made this year. Is there any concern with some of those that tariffs may increase the cost above what we were initially anticipating?
Yes. We won't know until we're at that point in the project, but it's something that we've brought up to the extent we can plan for it, and, for example, in some of the meetings we had for the development of the workforce housing project, that was one of the things we did discuss with the people that submitted a bid. It's hard to predict what's gonna happen, but we're definitely mindful of it.
And we are definitely seeing that impact as we go out, and it's an unknown for us and it's an unknown for many of the contractors that are bidding on the projects, too.
I'm just wondering if we should be looking at, kind of parsing out a portion of the general fund specifically for that issue, just because it seems to be changing almost every week as to what is or isn't happening, so I don't even know how we can estimate for that, but I just don't want us to get caught with, I mean, I'm assuming there's gonna be asks to come back for price increases based on some of that at some point for some of these projects, so.
Yeah, I think what, the difficulty is what we're seeing in some situations is, you know, we might anticipate that the contractor has the materials on-site, but because of an opportunity.
Right.
That they have here, knowing that they're gonna have to replenish it, a tariff, we're seeing that increase even though.
It's not increased yet.
It's not a direct impact.
Right.
So we're factoring that in, I think, in our pricing and as we're going down, and I think you're gonna see some of these other projects, one later tonight, that we're starting on with the, with the housing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there's questions.
Other questions? Audience questions? Thank you, Matt.
Yep, thank you.
Right on time, fifteen minutes, dang. He's good, he's got it down to a science now, doesn't he? All righty. Are there any announcements or written communications?
And May 4th through May 10th is the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, so I do wanna take the opportunity to extend my gratitude to coworkers, especially Devon Hart and Donna Romo, who assist in the city clerk's office, and to all the city clerks out there for their invaluable work and commitment to their local governments. I have received one written communication regarding item number 10, and that's the approval of professional services agreement with N2W Engineering to prepare a climate change plan. After speaking with legal counsel and city staff, we were able to provide answers to Mr. Duntie's questions. That written correspondence has been distributed to the city council and is on file at the city clerk's office.
That's the one from Jackie.
Yes.
Okay. Department head reports?
Good evening, mayor, council, city staff, Michael Allegria, fire chief. Last month, we ran seventy-three total calls, forty-one medical, thirty-one fire-related. This Saturday, we're gonna do a, all week, it's been a, sorry, to light up the night for fallen firefighters, so there's a lot of open houses. So I wanna thank the island company, that's why the casino was red for a week, and the front of our station was red for a week until Sunday night. So thank you to them, and we'll have an open house Saturday, May 10th, from nine to twelve. Have some hoses out and some gear out and some little obstacle courses for people to come by and see our station. We just finished up, we had a two-day All-American Leadership Class, so all ten of us were together in the room for ten days with the guy from the mainland, who went over some key leadership fundamentals, as well as really dug into, like, our own purpose statement and one for the department that we're gonna continue to work on and core values, but it was a, we just got out, it was a great two days, great two-day class for all the young guys we have. It was a great experience for them to get this early on.
Question?
And also attended the conservancy ball, thank you Edison, for the check.
Yeah.
And the photo shoot.
And you still have the emergency preparedness survey out, right?
Yes.
Is that still going on? How long is that going until?
For another couple of months.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor, city staff, city council. Since our last council meeting, the, my staff has created two hundred and forty, I'm sorry, two hundred and twenty-four observations. We had sixty-three calls for service from the public. There was seventeen traffic stops and ten pedestrian stops. There was a total of four arrests, there were two for drunk and public, and there were two for driving while under the influence of alcohol. Currently, we're planning for the wine mixer coming up in two weeks, and we're also planning for the Fourth of July. Both occasions, we'll have extra staff come over from, from over town. Also excited to say we're getting some new vehicles. We're gonna start phasing out the Jeeps, and we're gonna be transferring, moving into Ford Broncos, the Ford of Broncos, so it'll be, hopefully, within the next few months, we'll start to see that transition happen. That's about all I have.
I have a question on your traffic stops. Are we issuing any tickets?
Yeah, we are. It varies, I mean, it just depends, it's deputies discretion, but yeah, we do quite a bit of tickets. It's just about, not quite half, but I'd say at least thirty percent of them get citations.
How are we doing with underage driving and kids without driver's license? Are we stopping any of those or any, what are we doing?
They're being stopped if there's probable cause to stop them. Just based on looking at somebody, unless they're very young, you don't really have the ability to make that stop, so if they're running through stop signs or they're driving too fast or on their cellphone, yeah, they're being stopped, and then at that, and what they'll get is a citation for being unlicensed.
Okay, and, and it seemed like at one point, you said, the only way you could get the parents is if it was child endangerment, and the, my, if I am allowing my child to drive my golf cart, I am guilty of child endangerment.
And I understand that, that feeling, and I understand what you're saying, but that's something that the DA is not gonna file, not for driving unlicensed, just doesn't happen.
But, oh, so you ended up with someone doing community services, community service. The young person had like forty hours or some crazy amount, has that been accomplished?
See, the issue we had with that is that when we contacted the courts, there's a couple of issues we have, really, it's that the, the way the system works is the court system assigns that, and because you need insurance in order to do community service, and the city doesn't have that, nor does the county as far as the sheriff's department, so we're trying to figure out exactly how that's done. We're trying to work with the church now and see if we can get them some kind of insurance, you know, the Catholic Church to do community service, but as of right now, it's kind of difficult for us to establish a way to do it insured by the law.
I knew it was too good to be true.
Yeah, it's, it really was, you know, it's great to assign it, but it has been difficult to get it started.
Right, okay. Any other questions ever, comments?
I was just gonna ask if that's something the city can look into procuring, that level of insurance.
We've had that conversation in the past, and Sarah is not overly excited about that, but we can revisit with them, yeah.
Just curious, what you're seeing with the e-bike situation, the kids on the e-bikes, is that still leveled off and maintaining? Because I still see a lot of them zipping around.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot less than it was, and definitely they're wearing helmets now. They're still, they're still being kids sometimes and going through stop signs and going a little too fast at times, but it definitely has improved. We are making traffic stops and talking to them, and we still have helmets at the station, and they come in all the time for them. Typically, what we do is not wear the helmet, we're gonna make sure they get one, that's our goal. It's not necessarily to cite them so much, it's just to educate them and get them to wear it. But the goal for me is them not to get injured, you know.
Cool, well, at least it hasn't gone back, backwards.
No, it's definitely better than it was. This year's been a huge improvement.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave, or Matt?
Deja vu.
Deja vu, indeed. Matt Baker, Finance Director, good evening, council. March, I wanted to give just a quick revenue update. March TOT, I expect to be down around ten percent once the late payers come in, and that's for both hotels and vacation rentals. From a, kind of the estimate I provided at the last meeting, February was up by about ten thousand from where I had estimated, and it looks like March will be down about forty from where I'd estimated. Not overly concerned comparing to last year, only when you look at when the timing of Easter and spring break comes into play, it just makes me more interested in what April looks like, if anything else. We saw similar numbers kind of across the board and other revenues being down. Cross-channel passengers, where it's down about one percent. Nightly moorings, from a revenue standpoint, were down fourteen point nine percent in March, but up twenty-seven percent in April, so if there's a reason to be optimistic for April, I'd look to that. Again, not a great month in March, but I do think the timing of spring breaks and Easter have a lot to do with the down numbers, but we'll see what April brings. Unless there's any questions.
Good, thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city staff, Jimmy Milak, Maintenance Superintendent of Public Works, filling in for Jackie this evening now she's on vacation. Most of you probably already seen my update that I sent out last Friday, so just kind of reiterate what's happening with that. As you know, we've been working very hard at the Green Pier Restrooms, getting those renovated. MKS Specialty Finishes finished their work there. The flooring turned out beautiful, it's gonna be great, and so our guy's been working hard in there installing all the toilet partitions, toilets, eventually light fixtures, plumbing fixtures, so it's gonna get complete renovation, so it's gonna be beautiful when it's all said and done, and then, so hopefully, within the next, I would say, by next week, we can shift over to the women's restroom. Women's restroom will not be getting new flooring. The flooring in there actually is in really good shape, so we, to save, save a little money, we decided to do that at a later date, so, but we appreciate everybody's patience with us. It's a little painful when you go down there, especially on cruise ship days, the lines are getting a little long, but I promise it'll be done by Memorial Day weekend, so just hang in there. And also, if you haven't had a chance, please check out the platform and stairs at Lover's Cove.
Ah, beautiful.
They're phenomenal, they turned out really great.
That sucker's gonna stay there a long time.
Yeah, and the nice thing about these, they would be able to remove them easily if there is a big storm coming in, but kudos to the harbor maintenance department, they're the ones that fabricated it, especially Joe Guyen, it's quality work, you can see it, so. We've also been working hard at the kids' park playground across the street, helping the contractor install the new playground equipment, and also, this week, we've been working on installing a new rubberized surface, which they're actually replacing the surface at Canobie Park, and they'll be shifting over here starting tomorrow. And we've also been embalmed with several saltwater leaks. We had the big one, the doozy over Easter weekend, and we got another one we gotta take care of up by Middle Terrace, and another one pop. And, uh, we got another one we gotta take care of up by Middle Terrace and another one popped up in front of Tremont Apartments. So we staying busy with that. Uh, speaking of saltwater, there will be a minor saltwater shutdown tomorrow relating to the Five Corners project, uh, 7:00 AM to noon. Uh, it'll affect Eucalyptus, Catalina and Descanso avenues. That's it. Any questions for me?
Jamie, I just wanted to make sure people are aware. Um, I know you guys have the fencing up now for the playground. But just to make sure that everyone is staying off of the playground.
Yes, absolutely.
For the next few days, right? That's, and I'm sure David will mention, but they're gonna be putting in the rubberized flooring, which needs to have everyone off of it for the whole time while it cures. So, if we find you on there, you're the one that gets to repair it.
Yep. We do got plenty of signage and we do have signage stating that trespassers are liable for any damage to the surface. So, yeah, so stay out.
Yeah, please. It's looking really good though. All the projects are looking amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Jess.
Hello Council, Madam Mayor, David Hart, um, Community Services. This past Monday, we celebrated Cinco de Mayo with a community event on Wrigley Stage. At 3:00 PM, Father Dario gave a mass and communion. He also spoke of the importance of loving each other as a community and spreading that love to everyone who visits. He prayed for the protection, the prosperity for the island. We thank Father Dario for his, uh, blessing. We followed mass with the cultural experience through dance with, uh, tierra bella led by Victor Martinez. They displayed dances from the regions of where our island community comes from, such as Jalisco, San Laloa, Veracruz and Nuevo Leon. There was over 40 dancers from the age of nine to 50 years of age. A true community event ran by the community, displayed by the community, enjoyed by the community. I really loved that event. This Saturday, the LA Rugby Club will be hosting their old man rugby tournament on Joe Machado Field. These crazy 35 and older gentlemen will be scrumming over the rugby ball from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Come enjoy a sport you may not know anything about and you might walk away more confused than ever. T-ball, just a reminder that T-ball starts this Sunday, um, at 3:30 up at Joe Machado Field. Currently, we have over 40 kids, um, enrolled in that from the ages of three to eight years old. Um, just like Jamie was mentioning, there is a lot of construction going on in town, including the renovation of Avalon Kids Park. Uh, due to Prop 68 funding, we have been able to expand and update our play space there. Our crew worked hard to demo and create the space for the build and working alongside the Game Time Crew, they were able to build the playset within three days. Um, big shout out for Public Work Crew who apparently can do anything. Currently, we have our pour-in-place safety surfacing contracts here. Um, just like Jamie said, they just finished Kenaby Park. We'll be able to reopen that by Friday. Um, and then they start work. They started a little bit here today and they should be finished by Thursday, um, here at Avalon Kids Park. Um, we need for, like, uh, like Mrs. Lavelle was talking about, is we're gonna need at least 48 hours before we can open the park to allow that to, um, be open. So we will reopen the park, actually Monday at 3:30. We will have a ribbon cutting, um, and then release the kids onto the new playset. Then also, um, I wanna give a big shout out to, uh, Yucenia De La Rosa. Um, that's council members, Yucenia De La Rosa, our Assistant City Manager, Jocelyn Francis, and from Catalina Health, Gal, Foreign and Safe for bringing the resource fair here. Um, I thought it was a huge success for our community. And it was a huge success for our community service department because we were able to, um, align ourselves and partner, um, with many, um, programs um, that came over and we're gonna be able to, um, better serve, um, our senior programs, as well as open and develop new teen programs. Um, so we were excited to have that, those contacts made. And so I really appreciate you guys putting that, putting that one together. Speaking of partnerships, um, we are once again partnering with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And through Ryan Cordero, um, who's the head of, like, their education department. And we will be having our Catalina Junior Hunter Education Program. That's for ages 12 to 17 years old. It will be from July 11th through August 16th, but we're taking applicants now, I'm saying applicants, um, because we, some of the things that they will be dealing with is firearm safety and handling. Also using, um, recurve bows. And so we wanna make sure that the, the kids who do apply for this and we accept into the program are well-mannered and, uh, are respectful, um, to what they're about to learn. Because many of the topics, like I said, firearms, safety and handling, sportsmanship and ethics, wildlife management and conservation, archery, black powder, wildlife identification, um, game care, um, first aid and survival. Is, for those that we accept in the program, it is absolutely free. And so we really appreciate, um, that the, the Department of Fish and Wildlife to offer this course. And we're just helping them along, um, select the kids.
Right.
Last but not la, at least, you might notice the shirt that I'm wearing right now is a prototype of the official 4th of July shirt that will be going on sale at Latitude 33. This shirt, this shirt, as you can tell, is very much resemble of many of our island shirts that we have here, um, on, on the island. And, uh, this shirt was designed by Jerry Dunn himself. It celebrates our iconic 4th of July parade and the celebration of 4th of July on the island. A portion of the profits, um, will be coming back to the city to help fund our celebration. Um, so I will let you know when they officially come out. Um, and so you can go out and buy one and be a part of and help support, uh, the celebration of 4th of July.
You'd like to come up a little bit closer to the model here so we can see it? Closer!
We gotta do the runway. We're gonna have to change the cameras up a little bit, please? It's very cool.
Look at that.
The USC, oh man, the USC Martin banner on. Very, very nice.
And Jerry's, uh, amphibious.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. All right. Good job, Dave, on that one.
You, you had to beg him.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Jocelyn, Assistant City Manager?
Good evening Mayor, City Council, Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. Um, I just wanted to give some, uh, stats from the household hazardous waste and bulky item event that was last month. Uh, we collected, uh, four 40-yard, um, bins, uh, which included 4.55 tons of, uh, bulky items and 5.75 tons of, uh, appliances, metal and what they call white goods. Um, so that's fantastic. Uh, we had over 200, or close to 210 participants, um, which included nine walk-ups, um, and 112, uh, um, nah, that's, anyways. Um, yeah, we collected 81, uh, e-waste items, um, 205 gallons of paint estimated, 54 gallons of pesticides estimated, eight gallons of cleaning products, uh, nearly 150 batteries, 50 light bulbs, 19 gallons of oil and gas estimated. We collected, uh, two pails of sharps and collected, uh, 64 tires and, uh, 30 tanks. Uh, so huge shout out to IDR, um, and Avalon Environmental, CRNR staff and um, some of our public work staff that was out there. It was a great, great event. And, um, kudos to the Avalon Fire Department for making tacos and feeding everybody that was working the event. So, uh, we haven't selected a date yet, but, uh, we're planning on doing another one in October. Um, so we'll be sure to let everybody know, uh, when that's scheduled. Um, just a reminder, uh, we have quite a few, um, permits and stickers still paid and available for pickup. So, uh, be sure to, to come in. Don't get a, don't get a parking ticket. If you've paid for your sticker, come pick it up so we can place it on your golf cart. Um, May, uh, this coming weekend, May 10th is the cleanup, uh, meet at Wrigley Stage at 9:00 AM. Um, because of the Arts and Crafts Festival, we're asking folks with, uh, golf carts or trucks to bring them so we can kinda focus on some of the, uh, areas outside of the downtown area. This week is International Compost Awareness Week. Uh, so I wanted to remind everybody that we've restocked all of our kitchen waste pails, uh, here at City Hall in the lobby for pickup. Um, in addition, we've got nice, clean, bright, uh, stickers for landfill recycling and, uh, composting and organics, if you wanna make your, uh, your receptacles look, uh, clean again. Um, some code enforcement stats for the month of April, they were busy, as you can imagine, with parking tickets. Um, over 400, uh, were issued in the month of April, um, many for people who are unpermitted, uh, or unstickered. So, uh, come on in, we're willing to help people out, work with them. Um, Carolyn's been great, uh, this fiscal season. Um, they wrote 15, uh, case reports for a variety of building code violations, illegal dumping, animal calls for service. Uh, issued 17 red tags, two stop work orders. Um, they completed two home inspections with Foreleaf, our building inspectors. Um, issued four building code violations, responded 25 animal calls for service. Um, and conducted, uh, inspections at all of our food service establishments, um, in April for both, uh, FOG, um, and our green bag, uh, SB 1383, um, requirements. And, uh, they responded to 25 emergency calls for service to help out with traffic control with our public safety partners. And, um, tagged, uh, multiple, um, too many to count apparently, abandoned bicycles, uh, and picked them up for, um, recycling. Uh, last but not least, um, just because I don't see Paul here, but I'm so excited for, uh, uh, for this coming to our Avalon Library on May 13th and 14th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Um, they're hosting free basic tech training. Um, and if you attend both, um, four-hour segments, you could be entered in to win a free laptop. So, great, uh, resource coming to the island through LA County, um, Library and their information services team. And that's all I have.
That's a lot. So, does anybody know off the top, maybe Matt, what percentage do we get of a, out of a parking ticket?
Um, it's a mix. Um, uh, it's a, um, a good portion of a parking ticket actually goes to the state of California, um, to cover the construction of like courthouses, um, and things like that. Um, I, I'm not sure what, what it is off the top of my head, what this, what the city gets.
10%? Yeah?
Yeah, we can, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Lots of good, it's amazing what those two, two men can do in a month.
Yeah, April was busy.
The numbers are insane.
And, and, uh, with staffing the way it is right now, they, they helped cover the front counter uh, at different times and helped answer the phone and all that stuff. So I really appreciate, uh, Miguel and Afraen.
Yeah, thank you. Gosh.
Good evening Council, Bob Greenlaw. I'll give you an update on a few of the capital projects that are happening around. As you know, work continues on Five Corners. We're pouring concrete along the frontage on the, on the northwest side there. Um, and we're putting storm drain in, underground utilities. That work's gonna keep on continuing on here for the next month. So, expect more of the same as we go through. Please, everybody, slow down when you go through Tremont. We're trying to keep it open. Um, and like, uh, Jamie said, uh, that we're gonna have a saltwater shutdown tomorrow. That's to be able to get, uh, the saltwater service that comes into one piece of City Hall. We'll get that redone so that, uh, that lowers that service. We just lowered the sewer service that comes into City Hall and that's so the storm drain can go over the top of it. Okay? And then, uh, we have the Green Pier project. We've got about another week and a half to, on the Green Pier itself. Um, you see it's going very good at this point. Uh, we're moving right along. We've got, um, 14 piles in right now out of the, uh, 21 that we were gonna put. And then we have two more that we're gonna put at, uh, the Club Dinghy dock and that, so that'll be the last day, um, as we come about another two weeks from now. You'll see that go in. And so you'll see it move over between the club docks, the, the barge move over there and install those. Those are, um, steel pipe piles that are 55 feet long and they'll be driven in. And then that's it for that work until we get to the fall and then we do the rest of the work and, and, um, and then splash our new floats and, and docks there, getting it ready for the next year and then we'll take them out of the water. We also, Kevin's not here right now. He's covering on, uh, the pier right now. Why I had to come in. Um, but, um, we're also, we got the Barbara Pearson dock coming in. Uh, he announced that today that it's being delivered. We'll see that come back in on the 14th. And so you'll see a new ramp, a new dock there and a new A-frame lifting mechanism so that can stay in all year round. Uh, the work, the concrete work at the wastewater treatment plant, um, is now complete. And now they're moving into, um, the saltwater pump station. So you'll see those doors open for about a week and a half here while they go down there and they repair the concrete that holds the equipment and also the walls. They would have some spalling on it so that we can get many more years of use out of that. So those are the projects that are, are right now. Any questions from anybody?
No, but thank you. I didn't know to call you up because I thought we were gonna hear from you later, but, so thank you for stepping up. I think we're, City Manager, am I forgetting somebody else?
No, just checking Kelly. Kelly didn't have anything? Nope, we're good.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening Council. Uh, I just wanted to touch a few things. Last Friday, um, it was our pleasure to have Senator Lena Gonzalez on island. She, uh, spent, her and her staff spent all day with us. Uh, we had an opportunity to take her through a tour of, starting with the mole. The mole project, Pueblo Beach Road, reventment project, wastewater treatment plant, landfill expansion, uh, the Green Pier, Five Corners, workforce housing. She, uh, she takes it all in. I mean, she, she has been involved in these projects as far as her and her staff asking about it, but to have her here and see, um, everything, uh, it's a great benefit to know that there's, there's somebody over there that's looking out for us. Um, and even though her message essentially was the budget is really tight with the state, um, there's plenty that she can do otherwise. She can, she can nudge some things along when we need them nudged. She can make a phone call and, and get something moved up quicker, which is, is huge benefit for us. So thank, uh, her again and her staff, uh, for being here and they've already followed up and we've been in communication since Friday. Really what you've heard tonight, the message is infrastructure, right? Infrastructure week, we actually do it though. We are getting it done. You know, you look out the window here, you see the playground going in across the street. It's, it's fabulous. And that would be a big deal if it wasn't for the pier project and Five Corners and everything else that we have going on. Uh, but all of that is just great news and, you know, we'll, we'll get through this. And I just wanna thank the residents and particularly the business owners on the Green Pier for how patient and cooperative they've been. As Bob said, Kevin is down there right now because, uh, they're, they're continuing to work. And as long as they're continuing to work, Kevin's pretty insistent of staying there on the pier to make sure everything's operating, to make sure we're keeping the businesses informed about what's going on and everybody's safe. So, you know, appreciate both Bob and Kevin and their role down there and, and keeping those lines of communication open. Um, speaking of which, we've been in contact as recently as today with still some of the property owners on Tremont. We hope within, uh, hopefully the next meeting, we'll be able to bring Council, um, some information to get some of those encroachment permits resolved with the residents. Uh, we think we have everybody on board, the sidewalks. As you see, this is what Bob said a few months ago, you'll see them going in blocks at a time because we've already reached agreement. So that's where they're going in and it, it's really gonna come together when those, when that gets completed. It really looks nice. Um, so, so that's a, that's a great project. We're, we're thrilled to have that going on. I know Bob mentioned Barbara Pearson float. I'm not sure if you mentioned, you know, Kevin, if he was here, he would also mention Electric Boat is also on its way. It should be here in the next, done in 10 days to two weeks. Soon as that's here and ready to go, we'll get, uh, get all of Council down there so you can see that. I know you've seen it in operation, but now that it's all been decked out and it's in Avalon colors, uh, as soon as it gets over here, we'll, we'll get you down there.
What are Avalon colors?
Well, like the other.
Pure green?
We had to get a red, we had to get a red, uh, it wa, it was a gray boat and how, that's how they come. So we had to have them, uh, outfit it with a red. I don't know what they call it, but it's a skirt around it essentially. Um, to match our colors and to get everything set.
Oh, with our other big tracks.
Finally, I, the chief mentioned it, but I also wanna thank, uh, Edison for the extremely generous donation for that fire truck. You know, a donation that size has a huge impact and other projects we can do. And, uh, it's really gonna help out not only the fire department, uh, the conservancy make all of us safer, but it's gonna free up those funds for us to do other projects that are much needed. Um, any questions? Any questions?
And do we have a city attorney?
Yes, we do. Just a note that our office has been working with Donna in planning, bringing revocations of CUPs and transient occupancy licenses, those that have not been used, there'll be about, I think it's about 100 of them, that we will bring into the Planning Commission to start revocation processes over the next couple of months. So the Planning Commission will be very busy with that process.
Wow. Okay, thank you, Scott.
Yep.
Council members?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Just a couple of things, I did attend the City Leaders Summit in Sacramento, week ago, two weeks ago. It was an amazing meeting because it was mainly Council people there, there were a few city managers, but it was geared towards the Council members. Got to meet some great people and have some really good conversations. One of the big things is, the first day of the summit is lobbying our legislators. So I had meetings with Senator Gonzalez and with Assemblyman Lowenthal's office, more of with Senator Gonzalez, it was to be able to go in there and support my fellow Council people, and there are issues with homelessness, which is a real big issue on, in the Gateway City cog, so that was really neat to attend that. And we had a surprise visitor show up, Congressman Robert Garcia showed up to say hi, take a few photos, that was really cool. And then with my meeting with Assemblyman Lowenthal's office, we discussed the city's, the league's priorities, but I was also able to speak to his chief of staff in regards to DMV coming to the island twice a year, telling them that, you know, we choose to live on this island, but just because we live here, there are rules and regulations that are required from the state, and that we shouldn't have to be penalized to have to go over and take care of those issues. Because for us to have to take it, and I always emphasize this when I'm at stuff like this, anything we do starts with an hour boat ride. So we have to take a boat, if we don't have a car on the mainland, you have to rent a car, make an appointment at one of the DMV offices, hope you get in, and hope you make it back on the boat, but you've lost a whole day of work. So it's not fair that, just because we live on an island, that we would be penalized for that. So we're hoping that, because we also spoke to Senator Gonzalez about it also, having DMV, have it be a presence here. And then the other thing I did leave for each of you was a copy of the update that we did with Policy Committee meeting, what we discussed and all of that, which is really a lot of fun also. And that's all I've got.
That's good, thank you.
I'll go ahead. Still working on everything I always mention, that's still ongoing. One of the things that I'm very excited about now is for Women's Forum, it's coming towards the end of the school year. So now we're prepping the girls for interviews now for their scholarship awards. It's my first time doing this, but I just still remember the impact it had when I did it when I was in high school. So it's exciting to be on the other end, and also just super exciting to be able to help fund their next journey and let them know, because you get so caught up, I remember the pressure of just the interview, but just let them know that we're more just here to help guide you, you know, and making that an emphasis this year, because I believe as we keep mentioning that to them, they kind of let their guard down and realize that we really are family here, and that is ultimately what it's all about. Also, doing Contract Cities tomorrow, God, I have a lot going on. At the end of the year, at the end of the month, I'm going to Hawaii, so I'm doing everything before I leave. And then also still working on Boys and Girls Club, we have a couple of things coming up the next couple of days, as well as attended with Senator Lena Gonzalez, and I was very proud of us making sure that we advocated for our community, mentioning DMV, very glad that I let her know that our emphasis is also on education. I know that is countrywide, but I just wanted to make sure that we don't get lost, because that tends to happen, and we need the help dearly. Also, thank you to Dave and the museum, both events were amazing. I caught myself, my cheeks were hurting, so I was smiling the whole time, just so proud of embracing our culture, and like Dave mentioned, there was dancers from four, five, to over 50, really. I remember when I danced with them last year, that really stuck out to me was, we're all so busy with our regular schedules, they still made time, they still committed, and for a lot of them, it's almost like therapy, you know? It's their way to just not only embrace their culture, but really just let go of the worry of life, and that's huge. So kudos to all the girls, truly. I'm already excited for next year.
I guess I'll go. I was bummed that I didn't get to go, but I was doing rehearsal, but I had kind of a bigwigs week. You know, I was, oh, for Fox's sake, I went to the ball, and that was pretty fun, and talked to a lot of people at the Conservancy and other walks of life, and that was fun. And of course, all the Edison people were there from top all the way down to little old me, and they stuck around, and we went to the fire department and did the photo op with the truck and all that kind of stuff, so that was, that was very cool. And I was here for Senator Lena Gonzalez, so she's such a gem, you know? She really cares, she's such a true person, and she really cares, and so you really get that feeling, and I know that she goes to bat for us in a lot of things, so appreciate that. I'm gearing up to go to the Contract Cities Seminar with Yessenia and the mayor, and we got the flag over there, and I'm going to be walking the flag down in the flag ceremony, so that'll be fun. And one reason I'm so busy, and one reason that Mr. Librarian Paul Burchill is not here is because we are in crunch time of the play. So if you don't know, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at 6:00 p.m., there's no matinee this time, so 6:00 p.m. every showing is a play called "You Can't Take It With You", and it's absolutely hysterical, and the cast is doing a fantastic job. It's only 15 bucks, come on down, support your local community. You know, we've got two teachers in the cast, two are bus drivers, you know? Councilperson. So, yeah. So I guess we will see you there.
Awesome.
So I attended the Love Catalina Mixer at the Catalina Canyon Inn and Sunset Grill, which was well-attended and a nice event. The food was out of this world, so kudos to Veto and her crew up there for putting that together. Was excited to attend the Resource Fair and actually got to sit at the city table for a couple hours on the 24th, great job putting it together. You guys did so much work on it, to Gail, to Yessenia, to everyone that helped bring that event together, it was well done. I'm a little bummed it wasn't more well-attended, there were so many tables of people who had information to share and help to give, and I don't know if people maybe think some of it doesn't apply to them, but there was literally assistance for every walk of life at that location. Health-related, housing-related, assistance for utilities, assistance with rental properties, assistance with any number of things that wasn't, there was information provided even if you are above or below certain income levels, it didn't matter. So it was a great event, I'm hopeful for the next one. And then we also had Central CHA here to help out with some immigration and documentation paperwork for people. So at the end of the day, they ended up assisting four residents in completing their applications to become U.S. citizens, and that's amazing. They were talking about not knowing yet when the actual ceremonies would be, but that they were able to get all the necessary information together for that paperwork to be completed, and that was really cool to get to see and help out with. Huge shout-out to Michael Daley last minute, I'm so sorry, Michael, I will never ask you for a printer last minute ever again. I felt so bad, but we got it set up and got them being able to do all of what they needed to do. And then got to meet with Gail after the Resource Fair as well, just to go over kind of how the hospital is doing and where they're at right now, and thankful to her for that time. And then was super thankful again to have State Senator Lena Gonzalez here. She had some interesting ideas, which I'll share with you guys down the road if they end up coming to fruition, and just want to thank her. She does a great job of putting not only herself out there to help us, but her staff, I think, was here three times this month, and that's not something I think that we've really ever necessarily seen from most lawmakers. So I do really want to say thank you to them for taking the time to come over and provide the details and effort and energy that they need to be able to help assist our residents. I just wanted to point out, there was an issuance from AQMD on the Carl Moyer funding. They're having a call for infrastructure and vehicles. Most of the vehicles are, of course, heavy trucks, but the infrastructure may be something that could assist with additional infrastructure for the pier, for the electric boat systems, or possibly for the Mole, that is open until July 1st. So I don't know if we're already looking at that as a funding source, but it might be something worth looking into. And then last but not least, I'm attending cog tomorrow over town, so.
Well, I attended a lot of the stuff that was going on, it's been a day with Lena Gonzalez, but we also, I want to thank all the city departments because there was a career day through Paul Daniels' class, the sophomores, and I was here, and the kids were very attentive, but they chatted with everybody from finance to fire to the city manager, everybody participated, Jocelyn, so thank you, Dave, I'm sure you talked to them too. So there was about 30 kids, and then the fire department made some awesome tacos, so I want to thank you for that as well. But it was a great day. Okay, we're going to oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of, members of the public to address the city council. No action will be taken, and you will be limited to two minutes. Is there anybody from the audience? Oh, here comes Gail.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Manager, and all city staff. I'm just here, Gail Fornesier from Catalina Island Health, to give a quick update, some of it's already been mentioned, thank you all for doing that. Really just wanted to say thank you to the Council members, De La Rosa and Lavelle, Assistant City Manager Francis, Avalon Fire Department Chief Allegria, and all the city staff that helped with the Resident Resource Fair. We had a steady stream of residents throughout the afternoon, there were over 35 agencies there, new ones this time, which we were really excited about, were Child Support Services, LA County Clerk's Office, Our House Grief Support Center, Department of Rehabilitation, Delete the Divide, that's the one that Jocelyn mentioned with the training on tech and getting up maybe a free laptop, Central CHA Disability Rights California, Southern California Association of Governments, and many other ones, agreed it wasn't as attended as we hoped. We always want more and more and more, but of course, anyone that did show up did get served, and that's what the whole goal is. We're already looking at a date for the fall and working on ideas of how to maybe refresh it, maybe put it at a different spot, maybe more family festival feel, but I'll keep everybody posted. And in general, we really appreciate the city being a solid and supportive partner in providing these resources for our community in this manner. And also, our next Community Health Talk takes place Thursday, May 15th, from 6:00 to 7:00 here in the Council chambers. Dr. Amy Warren is going to talk about your gut microbiome and the impacts it has on your overall health. She'll describe what it is, how it affects your body, from the digestion of food to your immune system, central nervous system, and other bodily functions, followed by a discussion with tips to improve your gut health. So be here, we'll have Spanish translations, snacks, refreshments, and we'll livestream on our YouTube channel and Facebook, so if you can't make it, we'll have it there, and then the recording is also there too. And finally, there are many celebration weeks this week, apparently, but it's also Nurses' Week, so we've been celebrating them and honoring them all week at the hospital with various treats, and if you see any of our nurses around town, please make sure you say thank you and show your appreciation.
And how well are those community meetings attended? Like when you have them here?
Oh, the health talks?
Yeah.
They've ranged from five people to 35 people, so it just depends. Everybody really loves Dr. Warren.
Well, oh, yes.
So usually, that's a good one.
I came to the diabetes one, and it was, it was great. It was, I mean, we were full, so.
Nice to know, I'm glad people are coming.
I hope that it keeps growing. We already have June figured out, it will be a street drug class, so people talking about awareness and what to know about that, and how to do, use Narcan and that kind of stuff, so we'll have that, and then we're working on the rest of the year too.
Thank you, thank you, Gail, appreciate you being here.
Really quick, just...
Oh, yes, sir.
Shout-out to Gail, honestly, just organizing with you was so seamless, and being able to get 35 entities here, that's huge. So thank you so much for everything you do, and just so excited I can work with you.
Any other oral communications? Okay, let's go to the consent calendar.
Okay, consent calendar, first item, approval of the minutes from April 15th, 2025, regular city council meeting. Item two, approval total expenditures for April 7th, 2025, through April 25th, 2025, totaling $2,129,340.80. Item three, cross-channel warfage ordinance, adopt and ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 10-2.402A of the Avalon Municipal Code, use fees for the harbor cross-channel passengers, and adoption of findings under the California Environmental Qualities Act. And finally, item four, on consent, approval of final parcel map number 084192 for subdivision of the existing parcel located at 110 Chimes Tower Road into two new parcels.
Hey, Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve items one through four.
All second.
Call for the vote? Let me, give me one moment.
Can you go ahead and cast your vote?
Thank you. All ayes?
Item number five on the agenda is public hearing at this time. We'll conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution declaring intent to award medical cannabis delivery permit to Catalina Cannabis LLC. Devin.
Good evening, City Council. Devin Hart, I'm a senior management analyst. Before you open the public hearing, I just wanted to quickly synopsize everything to this moment pursuant to our Avalon Municipal Section 5-20.070 and Resolution 1807, which was adopted on March 6th, 2018. An application period for parties interested in our medical cannabis delivery business permit opened on January 21st, 2025. As you know, the period closed on March 3rd, 2025, or excuse me, on March 21st, 2025, and the City of Avalon received one completed application by that stated deadline. Resolution 1807 establishes a four-phase evaluation procedure for medical cannabis delivery business applications. Since this is not a competitive process and only one application was received, city staff did a review of the application to ensure its compliance with our Avalon Municipal Code. No application is provided to city council. No applications provided to city council because an application contains highly sensitive and proprietary information, and we want to make sure to protect our potential applicant, our potential, our potential service providers by not providing, as I mentioned, proprietary or operational and security information to the greater public. So, as I mentioned, city staff reviewed the application that we received from Catalina Cannabis LLC and ensured its compliance with the Avalon Municipal Code. The applicant is in the audience today and prepared to give you a presentation with an overview of their business and operations, and it's city staff's recommendation to adopt a resolution awarding, adopt a resolution of intent to award the permit to the applicant. That applicant, if that's council's action, after tonight, the applicant will be able to pursue a state cannabis license from the Bureau of Cannabis Control. And then after that process occurs, we will do another review with our Planning Commission to ensure that all SEQA requirements and anything that has to do with the applicant's brick-and-mortar address is in compliance. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Just a question real quick, I noticed the recording stopped while you were talking, is that something you guys need to have turned on?
No, I think that was...
Just for the Zoom call for Scott, or?
Yeah, that, that I don't think was intentional.
Okay.
I think Jamie's going to respond.
Okay.
Somebody else is recording?
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was all.
All right, I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any, oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like Catalina Connect to come up, or excuse me, Catalina Cannabis to come up and give their presentation now?
They can. Did you all want to come up and say something?
Good evening, council members, mayor, city staff. My name is Alexander Wenger. Most of you know who I am. The son of Chef Greg Wenger. Most of you know him for his famous fried chicken in the community. Also, the son of Elizabeth Wenger, who's a partner in the Catalina Cannabis LLC business that we put together. I was just thinking, and I was, the last time I was here, I was about nine years old, starting my first business to put a fish food machine on the Green Pier with me and my little brother, Michael Wenger. And happy to say, we are keeping the Garibaldies alive and happy. We have 10 fish food machines around the island, so we are a proud family of the fish food owners as well. But just wanted to kind of run through a little presentation of our operations. And, you know, we're just really excited for everything to get started and get this going for the community. All right, so we aim to be Avalon's trusted medical cannabis provider, known for reliability, quality, and community ties, while setting the standard for responsible and compliant delivery. We are committed to delivering safe, compliant, high-quality medical cannabis to Avalon patients with reliable service and personalized care. We, our products will all be state compliant. Our leadership will be run by myself, Elizabeth Wenger, and Sirin Siron. Our future plans will be to expand product offerings and improve delivery service. And we will, also, our overall industry plans will be rising, excuse me, for the rise, the rising demand makes Avalon ready for a liable medical cannabis delivery. Our financial status, we are funding is secured with profitability expected within one year. The organization and my cheerleaders in the back, myself as the CEO. I've been entrepreneur and film producer with 15 years of experience, now back in Avalon where I grew up, where it all started, to launch a new business and be part of the community again. We have Elizabeth Wenger, who will be our chief operations officer and managing partner. Elizabeth Wenger is a Catalina Island native, born here, and a lifelong entrepreneur who now runs events international and guided golf cart tours after co-founding several local favorites. She also serves as our local community's relations liaison, strengthening the ties with the Avalon community. We also have Sirin Siron, who I've started multiple businesses with. Sirin Siron is a USC graduate, Faidan, and founder of Straight Angel Films, known for disrupting the Southern California production scene and building a strong presence in the cannabis industry.
Does he happen to be here?
He is.
Just, oh, okay.
In our business description, I know most of you all know what this is, but we will be providing high-quality, compliant medical cannabis products, delivered safely, discreetly, and with excellent customer care. Our delivery hub will be at 220 Metropole in Avalon, and all operations are fully permitted and compliant with property, state, and local regulations. We will be serving Avalon with tested and approved products, including flower, edibles, tinctures, and more. We will be open daily from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Our product list is pretty standard. We'll have flower, edibles, tinctures, topicals, and concentrates. Our delivery service details, pretty straightforward, but patients will place orders online or by phone. Orders are then processed and delivered directly to the physical addresses, hotels, and moorings in a secure, tamper-proof packaging. We went over the operations hours already, but there it is again. Our delivery process, all deliveries follow strict compliant protocols with real-time tracking available, and we will be serving the patients in the Avalon area. Our delivery vehicle, which most of you are all very familiar with, will be similar to the Gem or something similar. We will operate one delivery vehicle compliant with City of Avalon regulations. The vehicle will be equipped with the GPS, secure storage, and will meet all safety standards. We have also gotten the permission from LA County Supervisor Lindsay Harveth and have received assurance that our inventory is approved for compliant delivery as part of our licensed medical coming out of LA Harbor. We have already acquired our seller's permit and our business license thanks to the application. We have registered with the California Secretary of State and are in good standing with the franchise tax board. Our insurance, workers' comp, and liability coverage are in progress with a cannabis-specialized provider, and all of us have passed our background checks and hold valid license and meet all legal requirements. Our security plan, our facility meets all state and local security requirements with professional monitoring and access controls to keep staff, patients, and products safe, and we will offer secure, compliant delivery to qualified patients in Avalon with trained drivers following all safety regulations. We will also be just having this information on our website as well, but we just wanted to give some safety and warnings about medical marijuana. And if there are any questions, anyone is more than welcome to send us an email, and we have a little holding page for our website as well. And I also just wanted to bring up one of our wonderful consultants that we've actually gotten to be, work with for the kind of the duration of our application process here, Jay Handel, and he just wanted to give a couple, a couple of words.
Thank you, and good evening, mayor, council members and staff members. My name is Jay Handel. I'm coming on as, and been helping as a consultant. My background is I am the COO and the founder of The Urbastores in Los Angeles, as well as in West Hollywood, The Woods, of which Bill Maher, Woody Harrelson, John McEnroe, myself, and my other partner, Devin, opened up a consumption lounge and a dispensary and a coffee shop next door, all very successful, and I have this dream of doing exactly the same thing here in the future with these guys. I think it'd be wonderful. My other background, you know, it's all about compliance for me. So I'm an elected official in West LA on a neighborhood council. I've been a 15-year member. I chair the Budget Committee for the City of LA with the Budget Advocates, and I am a hearing examiner for the LA Police Commission. So we run everything by the books. Our stores are very compliant. This store will be very compliant, and we're here to be good neighbors. I mean, the bottom line is, what we're trying to do with this location is, it's the first start as a delivery, and hopefully down the line, you guys will go ahead and authorize, you know, a dispensary and, you know, medical, maybe recreational, but I think, I think it makes sense. But it has to be done in a very cautious way to protect the community, and that's what we do. We make sure that we are good community partners. So, you know, if there are any questions about how it's going to work or any concerns that you might have, you know, I'm happy to take any questions.
I think we might be okay for today, and when it comes back to us, because it will come back, then maybe by then, if we have other questions, because I don't know how much more information we're going to actually be able to receive because of all the proprietary information you were talking about.
Sure. I would urge you to go on the website, go to thewoodsweho.com, because I use, I also chair the entire cannabis district in West Hollywood. Very, very, to me, it's probably one of the best districts of cannabis in LA County. I would ask you to take a look at our website, see what we do. It's probably the best place in California.
And it's called what? Weho, W-E-H-O.
W-E-H-O, West Hollywood.
Yeah, West Hollywood, Weho.
Yeah. Thewoodsweho.com. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any direct questions right now to Alex? And then if anybody else would like to speak? Are you going to come up, Carl?
Okay. Good evening. My name's Carl Johnson. I'm the former owner and operator of the licensed cannabis business that was here in Avalon, CJMH Group, DBA Catalina Connect. I was directly involved in crafting the cannabis regulation we rely on today, and I'm here tonight, not just as a former operator, but as someone with firsthand knowledge of what fairness, transparency, and community-based compliance are supposed to look like. And frankly, what's happening here tonight threatens every one of those principles. Let's begin with location. The proposed site of, by Catalina Cannabis LLC is located within 600 feet of not one, but two sensitive youth sites, the Avalon Public Library and the Christian Community Church, which also functions as a youth and community center. The church hosted the city's, the Christmas toy drive just last year and has long supported youth events. The library, as many of you know, is not just a place for books, it offers regular children's programs, including those run by Paul, our local librarian. Under California Business and Professions Code, a cannabis business shall not be located within 600 feet radius of a school providing instruction to kindergarten or grades one through 12, daycare centers, or youth centers. That law hasn't changed, and yet we're, here we are considering a business application that clearly violates this buffer. When Mark Milan applied to operate a cannabis business in Avalon, his application was denied in part because of its proximity to youth-serving locations. This location presents equal or greater conflicts. So I ask you, why is this applicant being treated differently? What's changed? Because the law hasn't. But the process, that's another story. This applicant's materials may be marked complete, but they have never been made public until right now, and frankly, those are pretty general statements. It doesn't actually address any of the unique challenges that Avalon faces. Not a single community member has been given access to the floor plan, transportation plan, security plan, or business narrative. If we haven't seen the proposal, how can we engage with it? This is a fundamental failure of transparency. To be clear, I've gone out of my way to find answers the city never publicly, never provided. I spent good money out of my own pocket to consult with federal and state authorities to determine whether cannabis can legally be transported to Catalina Island. That's not a... This is, it's a legal and logical, it's not, it's a legal and logical question. No federal clearance waiver or exemption from the U.S. Coast Guard has been disclosed. If they receive one, where is it? And if they didn't, how do they plan to comply with federal transport laws across federally patrolled waters? Because every single one of my vessels was boarded by Coast Guard. Let's be honest, other applicants dropped out of this process because they couldn't answer these questions, and now a company with no track record, no community involvement, and no transparency is somehow being recommended for approval. That doesn't add up. The staff report claims these questions were answered, but it fails to provide the questions themselves or the responses. That's not transparency. That's not, that's not compliance with the Brown Act, and frankly, it's not good governance. In fact, I've submitted a Public Records Act request today for the full application and documentation. I've received no response yet. If that material isn't, still isn't available in this process, it's not just flawed, it may be legally challengeable. Now, let's talk about identity and business integrity. Catalina Cannabis LLC is a detached LLC that was formed after my existence of a California corporation, Catalina Cannabis Corp., which owns the DBA's Catalina Cannabis and Catalina Cannabis Company. Their choice of name is not coincidental. It causes direct brand confusion and risks trademark infringement. I've consulted with legal counsel and will defend the identity and goodwill I built in this community. Worse, this LLC appears to be owned by another entity, adding a layer of anonymity that raises red flags. In this industry, that matters. While LLCs are often used by small or local operators, most professionally-run, investor-backed, or multi-state cannabis businesses incorporate a C-corp or S-corp to allow for share ownership, board governance, and financial transparency. That's what I did. This applicant didn't. They didn't engage the community. They didn't make their plan public. They haven't shown that they even reached out to the appropriate state or federal officials. They're not building a community business, they're shielding their assets. For contrast, when I was licensed by the city before the pandemic, my entire application was made public, floor plans, procedures, security, everything. I followed every step, and now this council is considering advancing a business that hasn't shown the community a single piece of their proposal. That's not just wrong, it's a betrayal of the standard we built together. I also want to point out that aside from the mayor and the administrative assistant, none of the current council members were really involved in the regulation when it was first created. So if you don't fully understand the original intent, that's no criticism, but I do. I helped write it, and I am here to defend it. I am not here out of bitterness or self-interest. I'm here because this process used to mean something to the public, to the business community, and to the city's reputation. It should still mean something today. Approving this applicant sends the message that connections and closed-door processes matter more than law, integrity, or community trust. That's not the Avalon I know, and I urge you not to make it the Avalon we become. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sure the city attorney is listening.
Do we have any other, while it's open for the public hearing, ma'am?
Yeah, because, okay. Anybody else like to speak on this? Oh, it's a public hearing? And Scott, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so you probably heard Mr. Johnson, some of Mr. Johnson's comments about legality and, you know, whatever. I don't mean to say whatever so lightly, but I'm sure you will be looking into some of those comments that were made.
Yes, we'll look at everything, but, you know, again, we have been, this has been an open process. We have come to the council with recommendations previously. There's certain information that is proprietary, that is, that is not subject to disclosure, but to the extent that there are public documents available, they will be provided within the confines of the law. Again, they have proved that they have all these permits and approvals, and it's in compliance with state law before the permit is actually issued. So this is a significant step, but it's not the end step in the process.
Okay.
So Scott, what exactly was public under, under Carl's business?
Devin.
I don't remember. That was eight, eight years ago. I'm sorry.
So, so different, because it was a competitive process. A committee was formed comprised of two city council members, members of city staff, and then members of our community. They reviewed the applications, applied the assessment rubric, and then brought before city council their, the committee recommendation. At no time was any application released to the public. It wasn't until Mr. Johnson submitted an appeal to the revocation or suspension of the license that we provided the appeal contents to city council, and that he included in his appeal contents his application, and that's when it became a public record, because it was part of the context of his appeal.
Okay, so since this application was unopposed, why wasn't there the same community involvement in, or was there in the, in the staff?
So pursuant to the requirements of a public hearing, a public hearing notification was sent to all of the residents and businesses and addresses within 300 feet of their commercial location. It was additionally published in two issues of the Catalina Islander on April 25th and on May 2nd. So we met all of our public notification requirements. There was no requirement for community engagement, like over, other than their participation, optional participation in this public hearing. The committee was comprised of two city council members, as I mentioned, city staff, and then our community members were representatives from the Catalina Island Chamber of Converse that helped us vet the applications. So it wasn't a competitive process. The applications are still proprietary and contains operational, operationally sensitive information, so that's why they aren't, weren't previously and aren't now provided to city council. Because.
And then in the process, there were several applications that were interviews by the council and, and the committee, making that.
council and the committee making that recommendation. In this case, there was only one application that was, that was complete and submitted and complied with the requirements of the municipal code.
Okay.
For me, the point here is not where Carl was or where these guys are. Where, the point is, we're looking at a new process or new person. They were given a deadline to turn in complete applications. One company did, one company didn't. That's what we're working with.
I understand.
So whatever happened with Carl...
To be clear, this isn't about me. This isn't about me. I just want to, I want to make this clear. Hey, hey, I want to, I want to make this clear real quick, that they won't get state licenses, and therefore this is a waste of time. This is a waste of time. I'm not talking about, I'm not trying to protect my business.
I know.
And I'm not trying to sit here and argue my point. The process was the process, and that happened. Today, I'm trying to tell you guys, a vote yes is a waste of this city's resources and time, because they won't get a state license, and therefore they won't operate.
Okay, okay. Thank you for...
But that, we'll go through that process, because that's what the process is.
And if they don't get it?
They don't get it.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. So, council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion per the city manager's recommendation, adopt a resolution declaring intent to award medical cannabis delivery permit to Catalina Cannabis LLC.
Before we do that, though, can I just ask one more question?
Of whom?
So you said that it's going to come back to us?
Yes.
So what, what kind of information are we going to get when it comes back to us?
Mike, go ahead, Devin.
The state will review it between, between now and when it comes back to you.
Okay. So, yeah, because I mean, you know, this agenda is like really super, has many, 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 many pages, and this has like that. So I was just curious as to, you know...
There is, and council member, there's also the process of planning commission we have to go through, make sure that they've gone through the planning commission process, looking at planning commission, looking at the site, the site plan. So there's that process. Once all the process is done, then it would come back.
Okay, so this is just your jumping off points, just your basic preliminary jumping off point?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Because at any point, this can get denied.
Exactly, yeah. Okay.
So there's moved, was there a second?
All second.
Okay, call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay, moving on to item six.
Item six is a seeking author... Item six is a Circuit Contract Amendment for the Coast program. At this time, we're authorized, we're seeking an authorization for city staff to negotiate and execute the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement between the City of Avalon and Circuit Transit for an additional not-to-exceed annual sum of $50,000. What we are requesting here, as set forth in the staff report, is the opportunity to negotiate with Coast. We have a, we believe we can be in a position to lease two additional vehicles. We think leasing them at this time makes the most sense, because it gives us the opportunity to be a little more flexible with what we have, and also do it at a rate where we're not owning the vehicles. What we're seeing with some of the vehicles that we have, and we believe it's just that year of model that we purchased, some issues with, that's creating issues with the tires as a result of the suspension and some other things. So we're working through that, but I just want to give council a brief, you know, where we're at with Coast in the last, we've officially gone 12 full months with Circuit and Coast operating in the city. So what that means is each month that it's been in operation has set a record for that month for number of passengers. In the prior five years, and I took out the COVID year, but in the prior five years, we averaged, the city averaged 36,900 passengers on our public transportation system. First year, Coast did 70,349, so almost double the number of passengers. And the number one complaint we're getting with Coast is wait times and people unable to get a vehicle. We think that this, by adding two additional vehicles to our fleet, puts us in an opportunity to expand the program and solve some of those wait problems. So that's, that's what we're seeking.
I just have a couple of questions. I know, I think when they first started, and I don't know, Jocelyn or Devin, whatever, I think they were, they were allowing it to take cash. So you drive by the side of the road, you go like this, and you hand them two bucks. And I think by not doing something like that, I don't even care...
Well, Circuit never allowed that. That never, that never occurred with Circuit.
Some of the guys might have been doing that.
Yeah, it was, well, it was never...
But it's, but it's, I think we're still missing out on a lot of people, because if they go by, and I go like this, and they stop, they might say they have another call, but unless the next people have really reserved it, they can still hop in. I think we're missing, it's just me thinking, we're missing people. And the other thing, as I'd like to say, is that taxi stand that's there, it's a shame that that can't be made available, because people could just walk up to that taxi stand and get one, and the vehicles could be there, just sitting there if they don't have a call, and people could walk up, because they're still visible.
We're, we're looking at ways to incorporate that taxi stand overall with the city.
Okay. That's just all. But I'm glad they're doing so well. And maybe I could be a driver.
The issue I'm having, I will vote to approve this, but my issue I'm having right now is service is really sucking, is the only word I can use. I have asked people when they have, instead of just posting it on Facebook, is to file a complaint on the city webpage, because we do control those, we do see those. But I don't, I don't know if it's a certain driver or multiple drivers that are just not nice.
Well, a lot of Lyft vehicles and taxis have cameras in their vehicles for their protection. Is it possible that we might want to look into cameras?
They have them.
They have them?
Yes.
Does anybody review them to, to, like, like, say, somebody complains on the city website? Is there a way that you can go in there and look and see if, what that driver's behavior was, if that indeed is what the complaint is about?
If that's what the complaint was about, most of the complaints we get is, I requested a ride, it said five minutes, eight minutes went by, it said 10 more minutes. Those are the complaints. It's not the complaints of, I was in the vehicle and the individual did something, or the driver was rude to me. If it is, we do pursue those, and we have pursued those with Circuit. They're very prompt. I mean, within half hour after we contact them, they're responding and they're reviewing it and, and, you know...
Leads me to ask, who hires the drivers? Us or Circuit?
Circuit.
Okay. And are they locals, or how do they?
All, all of our current drivers are locals, yes.
So they have an exhaustive interview process?
I mean, they, they interview. I mean, it's, you know, I don't know what their process is.
And we still have this situation with the people that, well, let me back up, because there's that new phone number supposedly, that's better, right? And then they can pay, I guess with a credit card, when they call? Is that how they pay with, you give them a credit card for two bucks?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And I don't know if that's working any better, I haven't heard, but I don't, I think getting that number out is a little more important, and even, even using those windows at the cab stand to put that kind of stuff in, I don't know that that number's there, I could be wrong. But it, to service our seniors, it still doesn't seem like it's getting quite there for them. And that's because of flip phones or no phones or whatever, probably.
And we'll continue to look at that, but again, I would say, you know, generously we receive, I would say, 10 to 15 complaints a month regarding service, and we've done 70,000 passengers. So, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna have that, and we're, we've, we've made some changes over the last 12 months. We included the phone, we included some other things. We're looking to incorporate the stand that we have in town. So we're constantly trying to improve it.
Yeah, and they're, and they're cooperative.
When we get the booth, is there a way to, because it looks like our issue is with people that are not, you know, using the smartphones or don't have practice on smartphones, could we have them create, when we get the booth, if we get the booth?
We have the booth. It's ours.
Create an account for them, and they can go down there and pay whatever they like in cash, or they can get help with a credit card, and then they have that certain amount they could use on the phone or call.
A bit amount.
And say, yeah, you have 20 left, you have 10 left.
Like express, and they don't expire.
We'll certainly have that conversation with Circuit.
Eliminate the smartphone usage.
There's some kind of a pad that would be like the general, and so anyone could tap into it and order a ride and pay for it right there, kind of thing, you know, I don't know.
You're still working on a boat, thank you, though.
That's a technology thing, but I personally love this system, and I know that we're still working through the kinks. I mean, it's, it's only been around a little over a year, so, you know, we're, but, yeah. But I do think too that part of the problem that you don't see a lot of the complaints is because people are having a hard time figuring out how to do it on the city website. How do I report a concern? And then it's like, go to the general thing, but I've had three people contact me and go, it doesn't make any sense, is this the right form? And I'm like, yeah, and just, you know, keep going, and, and so there's that kind of confusion. So Devin, I don't know, I know you were very instrumental in the website, so maybe you can tweak that part a little bit too, and make it a little more user-friendly for people to figure out how to do that? Cool, thanks.
More so than that, I'd rather them complain to us directly than to put it on Facebook, and then you have 100 people all, you know...
Absolutely.
It's a, it doesn't help. We, if, if it's not getting to us, it doesn't help.
And us meaning the city website, not our personal...
No, 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 no.
Don't say that.
No, 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 no.
Something we like to remind ourselves internally is the system, the nature of the complaints that we receive, especially regarding the inability to get a ride, it's, it's kind of like we're a victim of our own success, where the old transit system in the month of March would travel 10 people in a day, we're traveling 10 people in an hour. So the, the growth of the program's been so exponential, and that's been so rewarding. At the same time, you look at economically what it's doing for the city in that our, our contract costs are $200,000 less than what we are expending with the old, far less used, far less efficient system. And that's why overall, it's just such a great win for the city, but we are, as the city manager mentioned, always working to improve the system. And we are one of Circuit's most heavily trafficked jurisdictions, so that's also super gratifying.
It is going great, but...
Getting these vehicles will hopefully help with that exponential growth.
Is there a way to do, and sorry if there already is, like a rate my driver after your ride, like Uber?
Yeah.
It's part of the system.
There is a feat, just like when you take an Uber or Lyft, there is a system where you can rate your ride. After every ride, you, there's a star and a comment rating, so you can give them as many stars and then drop whatever comment you would like.
And then Coast sends that to us?
Yeah, we receive just like a handful of comments every month when we get our monthly reporting, which is also like really nice to hear, you know, all the anecdotal information. And just one more thing, it being the off-season and seeing our numbers so high on a month-to-month basis is really rewarding, because you know that the people riding and utilizing the system right now are residents, and then just like a touchy-feely thing. It's nice that the boat schedule isn't, does not coincide when school starts, because we have members of the community with children of varying needs, and they're able to utilize the service, because we don't have a bus system for our schoolchildren. They're able to utilize the system and have that sense of independence, and their parents are able to track them to see that they get to school, and, and those elements of the service are also really great for us.
Council?
Well, wait a second, so back to this, back to the thing at hand. I'm just curious, with the leasing of the vehicles, they'll be swapping out like every two years, so is the wrap, you know, the, the coast on it, is that cost-effective? Is it built into this?
It's not part of the, we will have to pay, we will have to have them wrapped. We have paid for all the upfront costs on the wrapping system by having it set up one time.
Oh, great, right.
So that'll save that, but we will have to have the new ones wrapped, yes.
And it's cost-effective?
It is. I mean, it, it's worked for us, and again, the one thing we didn't roll out in the first year was advertising. Most of the, most of the Circuit vehicles you see over town have advertising, we haven't done that. That's still somewhere we could go if we choose to do that and expand the system more in the future.
Okay, all right, cool, thank you.
I don't know why we bothered naming it Coast, though. Everybody just calls it Circuit. Circuit.
I know, right?
City of Avalon, da-da-da-da-da. I mean, it was so clever, and everybody just calls it Circuit. Okay.
I'll make a motion to authorize city staff to negotiate, execute the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement between the City of Avalon and Circuit Transit, Inc. for an additional not-to-exceed annual sum of $50,000.
Further comments? Second? Second? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Item number seven.
Item number seven is a change order for cultural resources consultation agreement with Montrose Environmental Services. This time, we're asking council authorize the city manager to execute a change order for professional services agreement with Montrose to continue to provide the cultural resources in, for an additional sum of $47,466, and this is related to the Tremont Five Corners project.
It's insane how much this contract was. I'm sorry.
Well, it's kind of a specialized field.
I mean, it is specialized, but they, what are they finding? It was probably stuff left over from the Metropole fire. There's been nothing of any Native American significance, I believe.
So it's a requirement of our CECA document to have monitoring, and one of the interesting things that happened along the Tremont frontage there was, I believe that maybe from the Hotel Metropole, when it burned down, a lot of the debris ended up there. And so there was some excavation probably when that happened, so some of the cultural resources can get transferred, okay? And it's, it's really, it's in a kind of sooty fill there, and same as what we saw at the Vaughn's site, when the new Vaughns was built. So just, yeah, it is very detailed, moving a lot of dirt, and I, you know, we're just, we need to keep on, hopefully we just now, from this point on, just monitor whenever we're in the excavation, before we were going through all the fill. And so there was a lot of effort there. So I think we've contained the cost now. It's not something that we're happy about, but it is a requirement.
Well, I understand.
And a respect for the cultural resources.
Yeah. Okay.
For a good reason.
Go ahead, if there's no comments.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a change order for the Professional Services Agreement with Montrose Environmental Solutions, Inc. to continue to provide cultural resource consulting for the Five Corners Site Improvement Project for an additional sum of $47,466, for a new total contract sum of $165,355.
Second. Who you got first?
I have council member De La Rosa.
Okay. Call for the vote?
Item number eight, Phase One of the Civic Center Housing Project Award, Jocelyn Francis.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. Tonight, we're going to continue the discussion as it relates to the Civic Center Housing Project. Jamie, can you go to the next slide, please? Wait, maybe I can get it? Okay, never mind. Okay, so here's an overview of the procurement process that we've taken so far. So on December 17th, city council authorized issuing an RFP for the Civic Center Housing Project, and on January 13th, city staff published that RFP. We hosted a pre-proposal conference on January 28th and had a variety of consultants and contractors from around the western United States. On March 3rd, the RFP closed, and we received a total of three proposals, and all three presented between the March, the dates of March 27th and 28th. It included an in-person presentation and a site walk. The city panel conducted further review, checked references, sought clarification, and conducted site visits of the facilities and various projects. Upon conclusion, the city panel all agreed that US Offsite was the most qualified building So here's the ranking that's provided in the agenda report. So as you can see, US Offsite is a lumber modular builder with manufacturing in Redding, California. Global Modular Builders is a steel modular builder with manufacturing based in Tijuana, Mexico. And Mandeville, also steel, with manufacturing in Plumdale, California. The proposals were innovative, the presentations were great, all three manufacturers really did a fantastic job showing what they could accomplish for our site here. did a fantastic job showing what they could accomplish for our site here, and it was really eye-opening for me on the construction of modular fabrication and manufacturing and building in the state of California, so. So just a little bit about US Offsite. They present themselves as a turnkey design-build provider specializing in modular construction. They leverage the combined strengths of their sister companies to offer a complete solution. So they provided information that demonstrated rapid scalability, and having quadrupled its production capacity recently. They employ a robust in-house team that includes operations, project management, and logistics, all supported by advanced design and technology. Their past performance includes projects similar in scope to what we're proposing to city council in San Benito and San Luis Obispo counties. I was fortunate enough to swing by yesterday for one of their projects in San Luis Obispo, and I felt confident about US Offsite. And, let's see what else. They do have the ability to act as a general contractor, which was not included in this RFP, and will continue working with BBK on next steps over the next six weeks on how to proceed. So what we're recommending tonight, so if you recall, when we issued the RFP, we decided to do a phased approach. So we've got Phase One versus Phase Two. So Phase One is the pre-manufacturing, pre-construction period of time with virtual and onsite meetings between our city panel, which includes consulting and city staff, and US Offsite. This will allow us to really refine the designs, more closely work with them on the site work that needs to be completed, work out transportation logistics of, you know, they're used to transporting units by truck, by boat, is different, and then through our, for our unique town. So working out all of those logistics in a partial design development, identify opportunities for any cost savings, and increase construction efficiency, and then coordinate preliminary manufacturing schedule components and rough concepts, foundation connections, interface details, and identify any items that are outside of the scope of the manufacturer. So again, the recommendation tonight is to award and execute an agreement with US Offsite for the agreement, which, the draft agreement, which was included in the December city council meeting, does award a contract for Phase One and Phase Two. However, there's explicit language in there that states the parties expressly agree that the city is under no obligation to proceed with Phase Two. So Phase One, the recommendation tonight is to have the city manager issue a notice to proceed for Phase One, which totals $55,000, and it will allow for that work that I talked about on the prior slide. And then, we're going to come back to city council. Matt Baker has got a lot of homework to do, and coming up with some recommendations on how to fund, finance, and continue with this project. And as we work with US Offsite, we'll have a lot more information to share with you all before proceeding with the manufacturing component of the contract. So that concludes my presentation. Ryan with US Offsite is available via Zoom if you have any questions related to their business, so, thank you.
I just have gotten a couple of comments, and I know it's money, it's all money, but, and space, but because the units we were looking at were, what, studio, one bedroom and two bedrooms?
Correct.
And there was a, how about three bedrooms? Is that impossible for us to try to figure out?
I think in this, we're talking about phases in this project, but we're also talking about phases in our overall housing plan, and we do have planned to use our housing money into a 40-plus unit building, so I think we can certainly look at three there. When we're talking about the space for this particular project, it gets pretty tight. When you make it three bedrooms, you're losing units.
Right, right, yeah.
I like that these guys are in California and everything like that, but I was, I was looking through it, I can't really tell, excuse me, what kind of materials, specifically roofing material, I've just, since everything is fire everywhere, I mean, how fire-safe are the materials that they're using? Has that been talked about?
Yeah, it was discussed in their presentation, and actually roofing was not included in the RFP. However, US Offsite indicated they do have the capability to construct roofing materials, so that's something that we'll get into further discussions with them about regarding that during Phase One. But our intent initially was for roofing, stairs, the storage unit, siding, landscaping, all the site work that has to happen was to, you know, that would be contracted out to two different contractors, but it seems, it appears that US Offsite can provide that. So it's not something we specifically asked for in this RFP as it relates to roofing materials, but as far as the building code in general, they're required to meet all of the, and that was stated in our RFP, and it'll be stated in the contract, to meet all the requirements outlined by California state law.
Okay, and I'm sure, Chief, you're involved in all of this, so you're giving it a thumbs up and all that stuff. Okay, have you also looked at the possibility of water reclamation for possible landscaping or something? I mean, if we're building from the ground up, can we put in some sort of a collection system?
Rain barrel system and things like that. I mean, we're looking at, absolutely at all of that. I mean, we're still honing in on parking and where that's going to be, but for sure. I mean, we're putting a roof structure out there, we want to capture as much of the water as we can.
Okay, great.
I'll make, because I'm excited, too. I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with US Offsite for the Civic Center Housing Project, Phase One, in an amount not to exceed $55,000.
Second?
Second.
Really quick, Scott, maybe this is a Scott Campbell question. I noticed on the agenda, it doesn't have the full recommendation that we have for city council, it just discusses.
Do you want me to do the one that's here, then?
The one in the staff report, I know it's a lot of words.
Then I amend my, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with US Offsite for Civic Center Housing Project in an amount not to exceed $2,921,420,000. Authorize the city manager to issue a notice to proceed for Phase One, totaling $55,000 only, and direct the city manager to return to the city council prior to issuance of a notice to proceed for Phase Two totaling $2,866,420,000, based upon the work due in Phase One.
I second, and just had one more question before we take the vote. If, in terms of fire safety, I noticed that the other two builders were steel modular versus lumber modular, is there the option after this $55,000 to look at both steel and lumber, or do we want to stick with lumber?
We would stick with lumber if we go with US Offsite, yes.
Will the siding be some of that other siding that people are using now that looks like wood, but it's kind of a concrete something?
That's still to be decided, but yes, yeah. I mean, we would factor that in.
Okay, excellent, okay. Good job, Michael. Okay, let's call for the vote.
All eyes?
Item number nine, we have a requesting contract award to International Consulting Services, Inc. for on-call consulting services. Mr. Greenlaw?
Okay, so this item considers awarding professional services contract to International Consulting Services, ICS. Currently, they're part of our on-call contract team with ESG. We want to separate that up so that we have more direct control, but also we save some markup costs on it. Mark Passivier is in the audience. He's one of the, he's the principal of the firm, and he's working on our Mole project, and also what we just voted on, the workforce housing. So he's provided great service. He owns a house here on the island, and so that's very good to help keep costs down, because he does have the house here, and he regularly comes here during the week so that we find him an essential component to get our projects moving forward. So what it's asking for is a three-year contract for $100,000 annually to start, unless we, you know, we come and further that, but there would be, it would be within the budgeted projects, so that's how it's run, just like our other on-call, okay?
Counsel, any questions or comments?
It makes sense that it would actually end up saving us in the long run, so I think it makes sense. I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with International Consulting Services, Inc., to provide on-call project management services in an amount not to exceed $100,000 annually for an initial three-year term.
Second. Moved in second, and call for the vote.
All eyes?
Well, welcome. Thank you. Okay, item number 10.
Hi, neighbor.
Item 10, our last item, seeking approval for professional services agreement with N2W Engineering to prepare a climate change plan as part of our regulatory obligations under NPDES, stormwater permit. We have to contract out and complete this plan. Jackie Cordero, I don't know if Jackie was joining us, she wasn't joining us tonight, right? Okay, remotely, so Jackie went out, they went out, as set forth in the staff report, received two proposed project cost bids, and attempted to receive a third, did not receive that. The dollar amount that we're seeking is not to exceed $50,000. So at this time, we're asking council to approve entering this agreement.
How often do we have to do this?
That's a good question. I know we haven't done it in the last five years.
It's a requirement of our permit.
Right.
When we had our new wastewater treatment permit, they said, the board said, you must do this.
Okay.
So that's why we're doing this.
Do you think it's annual, though, or no?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
No, it was one of the requirements for the permit, our permit's every five years.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and they're doing this across the state?
Yeah, they're not just picking on us because we're special. I know. Okay, we understand, is their emotion.
For the city's procurement policy, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager designated to execute an agreement with N2W Engineering to provide professional services for the development of a climate change plan for the City of Avalon. The climate change plan is an NPDES National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit requirement.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, and call for the vote.
All eyes?
Well, Jamie, I was off by 15 minutes. So if there's no further action, good night, Tony, means adjourned. Night, Tony.